I'll call this meeting to order. I'm gonna ask Lo Jean to do the invocation.
I know you all have your own beliefs, but I'll start off in Navajo. We pray for ourselves, keep us healthy as we go about our work and our responsibilities. We pray for the emergency, rescue, the law enforcement, and all the helpers in the community. Recently, there have been some horrendous accidents and fires, and our emergency people coming to the scene, keep them safe and guarded. We also pray for our leaders, locally, nationally, for the state. These are trying times and hard on our constituents and our voters. May we make sound decisions. We also pray for our community and all the people who live and work here, and all the people who come and visit and work with us. And last of all, we pray for the children, the school kids, keep them safe and hope that they are free from any type of trauma. With these blessings, we thank you, De'Nvini. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sitting in as chair today because Terri Fortner, our chairperson, is not with us. She's out of the country, so please bear with me. Gary McDaniel's is out today, but he is joining us telephonically. So there is four commissioners on site. Has everybody had a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes.
Is everybody good with the agenda? Looking for a motion to end?
And Mr. Chair, I might just add that we don't have any changes for tonight.
Okay.
So agenda is as presented.
Okay.
Motion to approve the agenda of April 15th, 2025.
I'll second.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Motion, meeting approved, agenda approved. Moving on to the items on the consent agenda. Item number one, consideration of regular meeting from March 11th, 2025. Two, consideration of special meeting minutes for March 24th, 2025. Consideration of regular meeting minutes for April 1st, 2025. Consideration of fiscal year 25 budget adjustment number 13, resolution number 242572. Consideration, number five, consideration of treasurer's check register for March 2025. Number six, consideration of finance check registers for March 2025. Seven, considerate, consideration of award of bid number 25-25-07, rebid McGee Park Bank restabilization project to Robbins Construction LLP of Antonito, Colorado. Item number eight, consideration of award for award of bid number 2425-18, pricing agreement for the production of type-two base course from CNJ Gravel Products, Inc. of Durango, Colorado, and Old Castle Southwest Group, Inc. in Farmington, New Mexico. Item number nine, consideration of resolution number 2425-70 and 2425-71, disposition of surplus and/or obsolete county property. Number 10, consideration of resolution 2425-73, recognizing the San Juan Health Council as official county health council for San Juan County under the County and Tribal Health Council Act. Number 11, consideration of amended and restated memorandum of understanding MOU between the town of Kirtland and San Juan County, New Mexico, for fire and emergency services. Is there any discussion on the items on the consent agenda?
No, I'd like to motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? There's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Gary?
Commissioner Ray Daniel?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Yeah.
Thank you. Moving on into new business. We've got an update on Safe Communities Free You Matter Program. Vicki Campbell, You Matter Program Coordinator. Welcome, Vicki. You're on.
Good evening, Commissioner and Chairman Gonzalez. Thank you for having us. This is the 17th year You Matters has been going, and we are going strong. We are so excited to share some of our stories with you. I brought four of our 21 team members to share, and this is just a glimpse of what we do in the schools throughout San Juan County. We hand out little trading cards, and we try to inspire kids that they can get through hard things and they can make a difference. So these guys are gonna share their stories with you, and then we'll go from there.
Hi, thank you for having us. My name is Ashby Panda, and I go to San Juan College High School, and this is my story. It's actually a poem. So I start my story off as a little kid. I was tall, a little weird. I didn't really fit in. Some girls on my soccer team hated who I was. They would tease me, believe me. It was no fun being left out, left me in doubt about my worth and my purpose. As time went on, I felt more worthless. I wouldn't eat. I couldn't sleep. Their lies had me feeling all kinds of weak. Every week, I cried, asking God why. How could I live with all the sadness inside? Thoughts began to creep in the back of my mind. What if I used drugs to make everything right? What if I used drugs to help me feel high? Everyone's doing it, why couldn't I? I would spiral in denial, not knowing what to do. That's when Jesus cried out, "Let me help you." He healed my pain, and He took my shame. He gave me new heart. I wasn't the same. Gave me new life with a different aim, to make God proud and to honor His name. Jesus taught me that through His love, I don't need to drink or do some drugs to heal what's broken or make me enough. Now I have friends when life gets rough. They taught me I don't need to sin in order to fit in. I just need good friends and purpose within. Now I punch bags and fly some planes. I focus on serving and getting good grades. The best part is, you could do this too. Just ask yourself what Jesus would do.
Thank you, Commission, for having us. My name is McKenna, and I go to Farmington High School. My story involves peer pressure. So in the beginning of my seventh grade year, I had really good friends who were positive influences on me, and I just started playing volleyball. And by the end of my season, I became friends with this girl, and she felt like, I felt like she was my best friend, but I knew I wasn't hers, and that's something that was really hard for me. And one day, she came to school telling me about how her and one of our other friends had been drinking, and I was so jealous, but not because they were drinking, because they, I felt left out. They were hanging out without me. And so the next day, when she came to school telling me about how they were drinking and invited me to come over, I had no problem saying yes, because in my head, I was saying yes to being with my friends and not the alcohol. So I went over, and we started drinking, and I knew I didn't like it, and I wanted to stop, but they didn't want me to stop. And they told me if I kept drinking, then they would tell me about this boy that liked me. And so I kept drinking with them until they said it was enough. And then they told me they made the whole story up. There was no boy. They just wanted me to keep drinking with them. And they continued to drink. I stopped. Her mom came home. We got caught. She called my parents and drove me home, and my parents were really disappointed in me. And as disappointed in me as they were, they wanted me to use this as a learning experience. And I wish I would have used this moment as a learning experience, but I allowed her to peer pressure me into multiple other things I didn't want to do. And it got to the point where I had to take a step back from that friendship and figure out what was best for me. And while I did have to end that friendship, I don't regret any of the decisions I made, because I know if I stayed, I would have allowed her to peer pressure me into multiple other things I didn't want to do. And what I really want the kids to take away from my story and everyone in our community is that it's very important who you surround yourself with, and if you're ever put in a situation you're not comfortable in, it's okay to say no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you so much for having us. My name is Reyes Stratling, and I go to FHS. My story starts a little before second grade, where I was in a really, really terrible domestic violence situation with my mom. Whenever we got out finally, it was the day after second grade had just ended, and I thought it was all gonna be over and we're gonna live happily ever after. I became really, really close with my mother. She was like my idol and my best friend, and I loved her to bits and pieces. She soon started falling into the same patterns that had started the whole domestic violence situation, where she was drinking constantly, and it became more than just like a every other weekend type thing. It was like every night, she couldn't function without it. And it got really, really scary, and up until 2019, it had just gotten worse and worse and worse, and she started hanging out with really terrible friends and started doing drugs. And I was stuck at parties that I didn't want to be at and babysitting her friend's kids that I didn't want to like have. And in 2019, my mom was arrested for these, for different charges related to these incidents, and I lost her. She lost complete custody, and I haven't talked to her since. And what I want children to take away from my story is that they can say no, and they can get out of situations where they don't feel safe or comfortable.
Hi, thank you to the Commission for having us. I'm Aiden, I go to Aztec. I was actually bullied online by someone I didn't know. Some random person got a hold of information, like my address, and pictures, and threatened to harm me. And so almost mindlessly, I did. I went to the store and bought it, like he asked me to. And as soon as I checked out, I knew I'd fallen into a scam, but I was so embarrassed that I'd fallen into it. So I didn't tell anyone. And with me not telling anyone, I didn't get any help, and this person just kept asking me for more money. And I was honestly scared of that, even though I knew in my heart it was fake. What if, I could never forgive myself, it was real, and they were gonna hurt my family? And so I kept paying this person over the course of months and ended up totaling to thousands of dollars. When I ran out of my own cash, I was taking it from my family without them knowing, all with the mindset that hopefully I would be helping them. And finally, my parents started to realize, I mean, I was depressed, I was anxious all the time, I was alone in my room all the time, trying to figure out when I needed to make my next run to get another gift card for this person. And finally, my parents found out and got me help. And what I want to tell the kids is nothing's too embarrassed to get help for. If I would have said something right away, it would have prevented my whole situation, but unfortunately, I didn't, and I just, I wish that everyone else could. So thank you.
So that's the gist of our stories, and basically, it gives kids a hope. No matter what you're going through, there's, there's something that you can accomplish everything. Get good grades, surround yourself with good friends, make good decisions, and keep going. And so we, we offer this, we talk to them, and we offer ways for them to communicate. We've had direct messages where we've done small peer group things. So it's been really powerful to, to have these role models out in our community helping the kids. So anyway, do you have any questions for us?
How often do you meet? You know, this is, I mean, what you're doing here for this community, for these kids and for our community, wow.
Yeah. It's awesome. We, we run a schedule, like we, I talk to them every week, and we just set what, what schedule we're going to. Some weeks, we do nothing, because they are very ambitious seniors going to school all the time. But we try to do all the assemblies in the fall, and so we get really hard in the fall before the senior year gets really critical for these students. And then we just do different community events, and then we try to be at community events where young children can come and talk to them and see them. They're real-life role models that we want them to see them as someone they can be, so.
Awesome.
Is there any questions from?
No.
Just a comment. When I was a teacher, I used to tell my students, 12 years is what you have at home with your parents. Then it becomes your life. But I think we all wish we were born into a perfect family, but that doesn't work that way. Along the way, I think when you're younger, you really listen to your parents. But then, when you reach the teenage years, your peers become more influential on you. And then you have the opportunity, it's not an opportunity, but you make mistakes, but you correct them. Because once you graduate and you go to your job, you can't be making those mistakes. It'll hurt your employment. But what's good right now is that through these mistakes, you learn, and then you have helpers, these wonderful adults who guide you along the way. And then there's also those wonderful self-help books. I mean, I used that a lot when I was growing up, and I think everybody has, as a teenager, experienced certain things. But along the way, you know, we somehow survived it. You'll survive these youthful years, and then it'll be your life after you graduate. And thank you for communicating that, because your communicating shows me you're healing, and then that you're, you're finding a way to, as, as we as Indian people say, you're going down the pollen path. You're going through the path of adulthood, young adulthood. So thank you, and good luck.
Continue sharing your story. That's awesome. Thank you. I'd like to recognize State Representative Joseph Hernandez is here today. Thank you for coming. Moving on to item number two on our new business. We've got an update from San Juan Regional Medical Center Safety Net Care Pool. Mr. Jason Rounds, the CEO of San Juan Regional Medical Center, along with John Mayer and Rachel. Go ahead, Gary.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for inviting us today. Of course, we want to maximize it, so we knew we were on the agenda, so we had a number of items that we wanted to discuss with you today. One of them, as a valued partner and our land board, we want to give you a brief update on some of the key projects that we're doing to fortify and expand and improve the facility that we're in. We do have the update on the Safety and Care Net pool distribution. This is an annual report. As my esteemed colleague to my left was updating me, I realized there's been some substantial changes as a result of the Healthcare Delivery and Access Act, so I needed some help in describing that to you guys. But most importantly, I wanted to introduce our newest member of our executive team, Rachel Skug. She has joined us, most recently as our Chief Operating Officer. She's been here since January. She previously served as our Pediatric Rehabilitation Coordinator from 2012 to 2017, so she's returning not only to Farmington, but to our hospital as well. She brings over a decade of experience in executive healthcare leadership, most recently serving as the Chief Executive Officer of Covenant Health in Hobbs. There, she led a newly-built community hospital to achieve notable advances in patient satisfaction, financial performance, and community engagement. She holds a Vance degree from Texas A&amp;M University of Corpus Christi, as well as a Doctor of Physical Therapy. She's also a fellow in the American College of Healthcare Executives. So you guys may remember her successor, Rachel, now Rachel, Ruth Brooks, who graciously stayed with us as we completed an exhaustive search. It took us over a year to find the right person. We're so glad we waited, and we're so glad that we had Rachel returning to our community.
Thank you.
Any questions for Rachel?
Thank you all. Nice to meet you.
Welcome to San Juan County and to San Juan Regional.
Thank you.
We've got a great hospital there, and I know you'll make it better.
Really.
Thank you.
I'm glad to be back.
We're glad to have you. Thank you.
So without further delay, I'll turn it over to my colleague, John Mayer, CFO, for an update on the Safety Net Care Pool.
Well, good afternoon to the Commission. It is my pleasure to be back in front of you again this year to talk to you about the supplemental funding that we raised from the state that helps us to provide excellent quality care and outcomes for San Juan County and the Four Corners region. So it's a bit, is there really perhaps a helping hand on this one? All right. Perfect. A little bit of a program history. The Safety Net Care Pool program has undergone significant changes over the last four to five years. In fact, the program has changed a little bit with its requirements and parameters for the last four. This is just a snippet of history to kind of center you on where we are, but the half-and-tap programs have been replaced now through Senate Bill 17 or the Healthcare Delivery and Access Act that was passed in the short session a year ago, ratified, signed into law here in the state of New Mexico, approved by CMS, and then the mechanisms are now in place with CMS and what used to be the Department of Health, now the healthcare authority for the state of New Mexico. So that's a little bit about what the program is. But the intent of the program is to provide additional funding for care that's delivered under cost, as well as outcomes and results. So that's the background and the intent of the program. Senate Bill 17, the new program, established the HDAA, and what it does is it provides us with a significant amount of new federally matched monies specifically for the managed Medicaid portion of folks that we serve, not traditional fee-for-service Medicaid, but rather the managed component of it. We actually contribute, it's called an assessment. No funds are raised through general tariff or general taxation in the state of New Mexico. Hospitals as facilities contribute to the fund up to 6% by CMS maximums, and then we receive $3.72 from the federal government through CMS for every dollar that we raise. That's how the money comes in. Total monies now raised in the state of New Mexico, net new monies for hospitals, $1.3 billion. We started receiving those funds this year. The distribution scheme has, as it's presented here on page four, is we get about 90% of that money comes to us. There's an administrative fee paid into the Department of Health and the healthcare authority, but we receive it right away after we pay our assessment, not more than 20 days. So 60% is based on volume, that's the access component. 40% is at-risk. There are eight components of at-risk for us to deliver results that the healthcare authority actually establishes. Targeted access payment, we received six months of half-and-tap. That program sunsetted on June 30th of 2024, and there's, it was called as a year lookback. So we get paid arrears for activity that happened in '23 and '24. So it's just a year lookback. We received in '23, $6.591 million, '24, per tap, $5.7 million. And then there's the hospital value-based piece, which is the at-risk quality component, $1.504 and $771,000 respectively in the first and second quarter of this year for the first and second quarters of 2023. Where we are expecting costs to go is pretty much the same. So this is what we spend for uncompensated care, charity care, for the members of our community every year. It ranges between $32 and $35 million below cost. So this is subsidy that we are delivering ourselves, and these federal monies and the state matching monies, or the federal matching monies to the state monies are really important to make sure that we are able to remain viable and continue to provide access and the service line capability that we do for the members of our community. This is what we're expecting to have to be assessed to pay, to receive, and draw the monies down. Just as a fun fact, about 46% of the lives in New Mexico are Medicaid-covered lives. In San Juan County, it's about 54%. That's all Medicaid-covered lives. We are going to pay 2.0, or have paid $2.6 million for the access component, and $1.8 million for the at-risk component. For the first six months of the program, there is no at-risk quality component, so we'll receive the full funding amount. That will change, so the first quarter of '25 is now under performance management. So we are under the performance management as we speak. That started on January 1st. The first six months were called the stub period, and that money was not at risk. So we are now being measured performance-wise for '26 payments, just to make that clear. Our total HDA payment is $37.1 million for the back half of fiscal year '24. We've received the access component, we'll receive the quality component and the net. So that's how that's worked out, so we are actually now receiving monies. And our forecast for calendar year 2025, $74.2 million, but we have to perform on 40% of that money on the cover. So there's 32, $31, $32 million at-risk, generally speaking, actually, we live our $28 million. So that's where we are. That's the evaluation of the program, how it's funded, and what we're anticipating to receive. I'm happy to stand for any questions from the Commission accordingly. Oh, one, one appointment point. I'm sorry.
No, you're done.
Good work, Mr. Chair. We are, we are required by law to spend about 75% of those monies here in New Mexico. That will be monitored. That was a big concern in the legislature when they passed the bill. We are grateful and delighted. This bill will save hospitals in the state of New Mexico, specifically in rural communities. So now I will stand for questions. Thank you for your voice, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair? I noticed on there you had Indian health service. Do you have an agreement with them, or is it just they utilize your services at San Juan Regional? Because I know they, they have to pay probably... Because I know they have to pay probably for the services that are given to their, the people out there.
So we operate under both, Madam Commissioner. We have agreements with Shiprock Facilities as well as the facilities in Gallup. We do treat and see their patients as they're referred to us for higher levels of care.
Yeah. And I commend San Juan Regional because you can really switch into a for-profit, but there's the compassion for the people within this area to where it is a hospital that serves the needs of many. So thank you.
You're welcome. We're delighted to be a privately-held, community-directed mission for San Juan County and the Four Corners. Thank you, Madam.
I don't mind.
We thank you for the leadership that you have at San Juan Regional. Makes it strong and our independence, being privately owned, being independent, that's where it's at.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just one more comment. I like that where you do your corporate meetings quarterly because that's really informative for the people who come there, and I always appreciate all the information that you provide. I thank you for that.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. And I did want to emphasize that even as a private, independent organization, we do have a unique setup that our corporation is comprised of currently 64 of the 130 nonprofit parks that operate in San Juan County. So that is where we draw our board from. So to say we are community-owned, we mean it. To say that we're community-directed, we demonstrate it. So thank you for that. So just a little briefly, we don't have an opportunity to brag on a lot of the projects that we are working on together with the county. But just as a quick update, we do have a number of completed projects that we're working on. Part of this is not only expansion and beautification, it really is going into the fortification and the infrastructure development of the building. So today, we've completed our negative pressure rooms upgrade, our medical gas improvements. We've done our telehandler purchase, it is being installed, our infrastructure of cooling towers, building automation in our transfer switches. And having lived through that, that was an exciting project to replace all of the main power that goes into our building while we kept the rest of the projects going. Upcoming, we are going to be upgrading our air handler system in our childbirth OR. That is a separate OR that's on the fifth floor of our building that we're going to be upgrading when we finish the beautification and renovation of our childbirth center, as well as the design placement of our HVAC systems. This does not include my office, but we're going to get that on an upcoming. Projects that are currently in process, we are super excited about our women's inpatient unit renovation. That's a $4 million investment. We're expecting to do the ribbon cutting hopefully this summer around the July timeframe. This unit will be second to none in our community. So upgrading the inpatient units themselves, we're adding a birth gym, as well as some other beautification programs to be comfort for the family, as well as the patients and mothers and the babies that are being delivered there. So we're super excited about that and look forward to sharing that with you guys this summer. We've done some other exciting projects. Our steam plant improvement is underway, BHU roof replacement, as well as other fortifications, children replacement, our cooling towers, and that is it. So once again, we work in partnership with you guys to bring that money down from the state. We're investing it wisely and in support of that, and it is out of gratitude that I came here today to give you an update. So happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chair, you have a solar structure there that provides to the hospital, correct?
We do. So it's been in place for a number of years. It currently supplies 35% of our power needs on any daily basis. So it's structured right now to feed directly into our system, so there's not a backup through the power grid or a battery operation, but we've had great experience with that. It certainly has been a cost savings over time for our institution.
Thank you.
We thank you for the transparency and you guys are doing an awesome job. You can see it, and we appreciate you taking the time to be with us today.
My pleasure. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good deal. Moving on, number three, we've got an update on the Shiprock Solar Project. Mr. Anthony Crutch, NG Solar. Welcome, Anthony.
So my name is Anthony Crutch. I work for NG North America, and I wanted to introduce my colleague here today.
I'm Russ Keen. I am also with NG North America. Glad to be here and can help responding to any questions. Thank you.
So I'll go ahead and get started. As I had mentioned before, I work for NG North America. I've been in the power industry for about 18 and a half years now. I'm a native of Birmingham, Alabama, so I've enjoyed the different projects I've worked on over the years. Spent about 15 years in the southeast at a company called Southern Company Electric Utility in the southeast where I worked several jobs, from working in engineering, I've worked on construction sites, I've worked in operations and on the power marketing side. And then joined the renewables team over at Southern Company and then eventually transitioned to NG. So that's a little bit about my background. I have a unique perspective as far as the power industry, being able to see from start to finish and now being a part of the development organization and looking with the site at the end as far as the commercial operations and how it impacts the community and the workers. So we have a presentation for you today. I was here back in 2023. I wasn't able to attend in person due to a conflict, but I was able to present virtually the Shiprock Solar Project, and then you guys never heard from me again. And so there's a reason for that. So we had the Indusment Bond Resolution passed in 2023, and then shortly after that, the project incurred some hurdles in which we had to redesign parts of the project and then that had to re-cook off our studies and then our surveys that had to occur after that. So gladly to say in 2025, we'll kind of overcome that. I've had a couple of conversations with Mike Stark, and that's why we're back here to discuss the New Mexico Revenue Bond, our pilot here at the county, and also provide, you know, what we're actually doing in the community and so forth. So I wanted to say, before I get into the actual presentation, you know, we want to give an update about the project. And then the other thing is, I wanted to talk a little bit on this slide about NG North America. We have ties of friends, but we've been established operations here in the United States, North America, for over 40 years now. And so here is a footprint of our operating projects. We do wind, solar, and storage. I've worked on just about all of the technologies, so I'm pretty familiar on the advanced stages of the development and been successful over the years. Operating a little over three and a half, 3.9 gigawatts. We're close to 4 gigawatts and growing over the next year or so. Here is a footprint of what we have over construction and development. As far as solar, we have two and a half gigawatts worth of sites that are operational in the U.S., and then we're actually development of 28 gigawatts, and that provides a Shiprock Storage Project that will be, I'll be explaining today. And then the storage aspect, we've got 35 gigawatts in development. A lot of our sites are in Texas, 22 sites on the battery storage, so we've had good success with those projects as well. So as I had mentioned before, I'm the New Mexico State Lead for Development. I'm responsible for the entire state of New Mexico, down to the southern half, all the way up to the Four Corners regions. That's where we are. Jorge Moreno was not able to make it today due to a death in the family, so took over for him, and then we've got Russ Keen here. What's not mentioned today as on this particular list is there's an actual teamwork on this project. We've got engineers, we've got construction, we've got folks doing supplying and land operations, environmental work entitled. So I'd like to bring them back as we get further along in the design and maybe they can answer a few questions as we get closer to the start of construction. So here's the actual project that was presented back in 2023. The location of it is in front of the old San Juan Generation Station off of Highway 64. The capacity is 360 megawatts of solar, and then we're also going to build 360 megawatts of battery storage. We do have a point of interconnect, it's the Shiprock Solar, excuse me, the Shiprock Substation, it's a 345 KB area. And the reason the interconnection's not signed yet, we do have to go through a permitting process. We've got, we work a lot with the Bureau of Land Management here out of Farmington, and part of that process, we have to go through the National Environmental Policy Act, which is NEPA, short acronyms. And then NEPA has a sister agency from the BLM, which is a Western Area Power Administration. They review the project, and then US Fish and Wildlife and other government agencies all teamed together to form the NEPA Act. So there's a lot that goes into it. It's about a 12-month process, and what kicks that off is we have a proof of our site studies, a plan of development, which has already been turned into the, to the Bureau of Land Management, and now they are wrapping up their studies so that we can be at the start the NEPA process, which is a 12-month statute at the least for the permitting process where they involve the neighboring government agencies in the area. And then the way it works is, once the BLM is done with their review, the Western Area Power Administration gets involved, and we already have a draft interconnection agreement. We're showing it a COD of 2030, primarily as the last time when we talked to the Western Area Power Administration, what we have in writing for them, there's a long lead time with the equipment and what it takes to be able to go and construct the actual point of interconnect and infrastructure. We believe that time period can be cut lower once we, but we can't engage in those conversations until the initial NEPA process with the BLM is complete. Once again, the baseline studies are complete. We have had to require some extra land from the BLM and private parcels, so we're working through that process of updating our studies. It's a low-risk impact site to the environment. This slide goes into more of the specifics of the studies we've been performing. What you're seeing here is the actual boundary of the site in front of the San Juan Generation Station. As I had mentioned before, we know where we are in San Juan County, but where we are as of today is the project has gotten advanced enough to start marketing the project to off-takers, and when we get to that point, that's how we're able to advance the capital infrastructure funding from our board to be able to continue construction activities. So I will say that we've made a lot of progress over the past year. We're in a design of 10%, which means we do our roads and foundations and collector systems. That's where we get our information from the, to give to our EPC contractors, and then immediately after that, we'll actually go into a 30% design. So the budget right now, I wanted to just point out, we're committed to San Juan County. We've spent around $22 million to date, and the investment total, the cost to build, and this is just our equipment and our EPC contractor, we've got for solar is $476 million. That's an indicative price. It could go up a little or down. And then for the battery storage is $383 million. So you can see the magnitude of the size of the impact of this project and the county and the revenue this could produce in property taxes and benefits to the community. So I've touched on this slide a little bit. We've talked about the interconnection, site studies, but what really drives this whole process and allowing us to succeed is the power marketing piece of it, the tax of being it, and being able to advance the engineering design, and that's what we're doing right now. We're planning to source equipment domestically. We do have a design which we're going to our EPCs and working with them. And then the actual local tax, we're working with Mike Stark and his team, and then we've got the road use agreement. There's not really actually one required here, but we do work hand-in-hand with the county so that when we start construction, we leave the roads better than when, before they we even started. So that's what we do as far as our due diligence in working as an established developer. We included this slide, I've talked a little bit about battery storage. As I had mentioned before, in Texas, we have 22 operational sites, no issues. I understand there has been some concerns over the years with battery storage and the safety of it, but what we have noticed is that the technology has evolved over time. There's safety measures intact. There's a fire safety design, as you can see in the actual diagram here, smoke detectors, thermal detectors, gas detectors, and the whole purpose of these is you set these at a lower and higher limit, and then that actually, first of all, our priority is protect personnel. So if we're exceeding limits where that is, then you can cause a catastrophic event. The more we know about the data that comes out of those, the equipment, then we can be able to make informed decisions whether to shut the equipment down or we need to evacuate the area. But as I mentioned, we have 22 sites in Texas, no issues. And then there's actually standards that have been set in the market now with testing and standards similar to other pieces of equipment in engineering to be able to show that these are, you know, low-risk pieces of equipment. Then lastly, we get this question a lot about decommissioning, are you just going to leave the panels here after 30 years and the storage? Our business model at NG North America is to be good stewards. So rather, it's a decommissioning, the bond that's required or not, we still factor in cost paid into a bond, and then we go forward with restoring the project land back to the original source. So if it was farmland, if it was desert land with established acceptable vegetation, that's what we work on. Now, for this particular project, the BLM actually has their process in which we pay into a bond. So that's nothing new to us because we're already used to doing decommissioning, but just to give some reassurance, that is part of our permit. And as you can see here, there's examples about the restoration that will occur. The panels will be disposed of, some of them recycled, and then we go through a reclamation period where the ground gets restored as if nothing was ever there. One last slide I'll point to is just our rapport in the industry right now. We're in the top of the developers in selling power to big tech companies, municipalities. This was based on the 2023 Market Outlook Report. Bloomberg Industrial Performance Tracking, NG has shown resilience and consistencies by ranking in the top three developers. So there's a reason I say this, and we're headquartered out of Houston, is that we're not just any ordinary developers that wants to come in, make a presence, and then flip the site, and then you go on to the next person. We establish ourselves as a long-term owner-operator. We try to source our materials and our folks locally to be able to come in to the plant, and this is the same person you'll be going to the supermarkets with, the same technicians you'll be going to church with, the kids we'll go to school together, and hopefully that will give you some more, you know, reassurance that we're here to stay and we're committed to the community. One last thing I'll say before I close about the community support, we have full support of Bureau of Land Management, BLM. We've met with, we've met with San Juan Citizens Alliance, they're on board with what we're doing, we talk regularly. We have recently joined the San Juan Chamber of Commerce, so we've paid our dues and we look forward to, I look forward to coming back and presenting to them and seeing, you know, what businesses locally we can do business with and source some parts. And then lastly, we do have some landowners there on site. They're very excited. Mr. Rogers is there off of 64, and I didn't get a chance to talk to him when I went by the site today, but I'm sure he would have been glad to be here today and I'll keep in touch with him with the developments. So I'll stop there and see if there's any questions and invite Russ up so we can address your questions based on our presentation today.
Thank you. I do have a question. When do you expect the project to be completely constructed?
Sure. So we call that commercial operations, which is in 2030. As I had mentioned before, that is part of our interconnection timeline. We believe that we can shorten that period to maybe a 2027, 2028 COD.
Madam, Mr. Chair, I have a question. What's the total cost of the project?
Sure. So the way we report out is our, is our equipment and our EPC costs. There's minimal cost when it comes to development and financing, but we're looking at around $700 to $800 million of investment in account.
And how many jobs at that?
That's a good question, too. So during the construction phase is where we offer the most impact. You know, you have your spin-off companies, there's your restaurants and so forth, over 100 jobs during construction. We do offer eight to 10, sometimes 12, at this particular site because it's so large, a full-time employee. So there would be an NG site manager, an assistant site manager, an admin, someone to do buildings and grounds, and then there would be several technicians here. So it could be up to 10 to 12 employees. And then from there, we have maintenance contracts to where we extend out to local municipalities or, let me say, contractors to come in and do work. So if you look, there's indirect and direct, it could be as many as 50 jobs during operations.
This is just a comment. I remember way back when we had I remember way back when we had, I guess, developers come to our state and they were kind of amazed that we weren't even tapping into solar energy. But maybe right now is kind of opportune time because it doesn't rain here, it doesn't, no storms, but we do have a lot of sunlight. And, and I know, like, I'm glad that you met with environmentalists who, they get very concerned, they don't want the air polluted, and with solar energy is what they're seeing. I don't know if we have a lot of wind here, but mainly it's solar. But I guess it's good to see that this is going to develop because I know the summers are going to be hot because I've been reading about that. And that takes a lot of energy. So thank you.
You're welcome, Madam Commissioner. I think Russ may have some points on community development he'd like to share with you.
Yes, I know your background as an educator commissioner. And just as Anthony said, we are a long-term owner and operator. We're not here to build this and, and flip it. And we, we will be here 20, 30 years at minimum and want to be a good community partner, a good corporate citizen. We've joined the Regional Economic Development Group, I think is the proper name, here and look forward to getting involved. And while they may be sprinkles, they're small, but we want to look at schools, scholarships, looking forward to hearing about the county fair I see on the agenda today. So we want to, we want to be as part of our, our new role in the, in the county and with eight, 10, 12 permanent employees here going forward for all those years. We're paying a lot of taxes over that time period and, and want to understand and hear from you and other leaders, what are your community priorities? And that's part of my role with communications and community relations going forward. So really excited to, to, to plant our flag here in San Juan County.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions. First of all, on the construction jobs and the, the full-time permanent jobs going forward. I asked you this early, earlier, but for the benefit of everybody in the audience, are you planning to hire locally for the construction jobs and the full-time jobs? Is that a local, local thing, or will you have to bring people in from outside the area?
We will, our, our EPC, our contractors, part of our agreement with them is that they make their best efforts to hire locally, for example. Anthony said 100, 100 temporary construction jobs. I think it'll be more than that over two, three, maybe even four years since we have both projects going, the storage and the solar, and they'll be being constructed at the same time. So I, I don't know, I don't understand the, you know, the workforce here. Those are typical construction jobs, heavy equipment operation, a lot of electrical work, some very skilled labor involved. And I'm sure they'll, they'll be recruiting here, those contractors will work with your local citizens as much as possible. In terms of the, let's call it 10 permanent jobs, if, if they, if the talent is here, we would certainly like to have local operators. There'd be, as Anthony said, a kind of site manager and assistant manager and an admin person, a handful of technicians, maintenance people. So they're all very good-paying jobs we see. I, I don't consider this a rural area, we often operate in more, much more rural or sparse areas, and they could be some of the best jobs in those counties. But I think they'll be, we will absolutely make an effort, best effort, to see that happen. We could, we could work with tribes, we could do a job fair, you know, things like that as we get closer, if you'd like for us to.
And the other question, the hot topic of everybody in the nation right now, tariffs. How do you foresee the tariffs impacting this project?
They could certainly affect pricing. The tariffs are somewhat in flux. Part, a lot of the solar components come from China, and that, that is a tariff that doesn't appear to be being relaxed in the bilateral, the two nations. And we, we, we work that into our, to our calculations. It hasn't changed things so drastically that we're tapping the brakes on this project at all.
All right. One more question. You know, these batteries, you're going to have an array of batteries. And in my mind, you know, they create a lot of heat. What happens when one of these, if one of these batteries blows up? What, what impact would it have on our atmosphere, on the environment? Or, you know, if there's a chain reaction of batteries blowing up? I don't know if you've had it in, run into any such circumstances like that, but, you know, I'd like to know what, what you say about something like that.
Sure. Yes, a great question and very topical. There's a very public fire in California, if we call it Moss Point, which is a much older technology, and it was enclosed inside of a metal building that, that helped with the combustion and spread. The, I guess, the, and we were pleased to brief earlier today, your, your fire chiefs, who I see in the audience, and the, the actual suppression of a fire, and you've seen these, they look like railroad cars.
Right.
Rows of them. If, and they are, they have, they are stacked, each container is stacked with battery cells. And if one of those containers were to ignite, typically, generally, you're able to keep it contained to that one container. You don't put water, there isn't, because they have, the batteries, they have chemicals in them, you don't put water, there's not really a foam process yet available to suppress the fire. You, you let it burn, and they typically burn for about 24 hours to 48 hours. You want to keep the neighboring cabinets, if you will, and neighboring containers cooled with water. And something we talked about with, with your fire department today, we want to have in place an emergency response plan. We do, we invite them to do annual inspections. We will do tabletop exercises, your emergency, the county emergency response coordinator was also in that meeting. We will work very collaboratively, not only on the safety plan during, during construction, we'll understand the, the abilities, the assets at the hospital here and emergency EMS abilities to come out to the site if there were a construction accident. And then with the, once we're operational, with the emergency response plan, we use several consultants around the country that will work collaboratively to help them understand, help your department understand how to manage that fire. And part of that, we would be providing you a projected, what's called a plume study, what is in the atmosphere, to your question.
That's my question. You know, what kind of gases are going to be emitted, are there going to be poisonous gases?
They are, they, they, they are, could be harmful, and there are, there's special equipment for the firefighters that we actually invest in and help cost-share with, hoods and gloves and other, other PPO. And we, and we're working with a volunteer fire department or a professional department. Either way, we want to bring every resource possible and plans to work with them. The, and we can show you, there will be a, you know, a science, engineering-based report to talk about the plume study and how that, call it a two-day fire, what it might put into the atmosphere. Once those batteries are finally, finally inspected sized, and help you understand. The good news is, we're out at a longstanding industrial site, four or five miles away from civilization, if you will. There's no, no ranches, there's no, much less an urban area really close by. And I hope, I, I think you'll find that those, those harmful air toxins are, are quickly, they quickly dissipate. But we, and our knowledge, we've asked, been asked the same question a lot lately. There are about 500 best, best systems in operation in the country, and there have been 35 fires, if my numbers are correct. And that's over a 10-year period. It is a relatively new technology, but we will be wired into the fire department here. It will be, it's remotely, remotely monitored, be direct connections to the fire department. Our, our maintenance personnel, our, our staff here would be very nearby to help make sure that there's access. And I, I hope you'll be comfortable with that, that science-based report on what those harmful emissions might look like and how temporary they are.
Well, thank you for that explanation. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, in the Four Corners area, we have the School of Energy and the Heavy Equipment Program, the CDL, all at San Juan College. In Crown Point, Navajo Technical University has a lot of other programs. And then you go to Blanding near us, and then into Colorado, there are a lot, there's a lot of training going on to get skilled workers out there. And I know people want to work, they want to have an income that's guaranteed to make sure they pay their bills and send their kids to college and buy a home. So, but the workforce, I think we have here, I want to emphasize that.
We have a neighboring project in Shiprock over on the Navajo Nation, and we've been in tech with, with INTEC and different trades, authors that are, they're working with the local community college. We have several programs within NG in which we actually source from technical colleges, but everyone has to have a four-year degree. But if you can be able to, you know, go for a special skill, you can be very valuable in the community.
Thank you.
I was just going to compliment you. I guess you're funding this U Matter program, the courageous students that just stood before you. And we had mentioned scholarships are a possibility. We, we think investing in STEM programs in our community is very important. If we can make this project, it's really, I think, going to be an interesting case study, putting renewables in a former coal plant and, you know, almost a billion dollars in investment. I think it'll be, it'd be neat to have a learning laboratory of some sort, to bring high school and all of those trade schools and, and technical schools you mentioned to see the site. We'd really like to do that, make it a national showcase.
That's a great opportunity.
Yes.
We're doing that.
Gary, do you have any questions?
No, sir. No, sir. All sounds good. Thank you.
Good. Thank you for coming in. Mr. Commissioner? And Madam Commissioners?
Moving on to item number four under business, new business. Consideration of Resolution Number 2425-74, Foxtail Flats Solar LLC Industrial Revenue Bonds. It's Peter Kelton with Rodney Law Firm. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners. It's a pleasure being here this evening. My name is Peter Kelton. I'm an attorney with the Rhodey Law Firm. Here with me today is also Nate Runyon, representing DESRI. I, of course, represent San Juan County for this transaction with a loyalty to the county. Before going into the legal aspects of the industrial revenue bond transaction, I thought it might help to have a little bit of background on the Foxtail Flats and Four Mile Solar Projects. So I'll hand it over to Nate, and then I'll follow up with, with a walkthrough of the IRV process, how all of it works from a legal perspective. And then after we cover those items, I think I'll just move on to the individual resolutions, just flag that these are inducement resolutions, the power amounts, and go from there. So with that, I'll hand it over to Nate.
Thank you, Peter. As you mentioned, my name is Nate Runyon. I'm with the law firm of Paul and Hart. Happy to be here today, we're kind of wearing two hats. Our firm represents NG Renewables, and, and we also represent DESRI, who we'll be speaking for on this, these specific projects. DESRI is DE Shaw Renewables. DESRI is the developer that's developed the San Juan Solar One project, both a solar and storage project that's, that's in process, and it's going to be starting to be operating shortly. So just a little background on, on DESRI. So DESRI, similar to NG, has operations nationwide, quite a bit in the, in the Midwest, also in Louisiana, Texas, quite a bit in Utah, California, and then here in Mexico, the San Juan Solar Project, as I mentioned. This is where these new projects, so, so two projects, the Foxtail Flats Solar and the both solar and storage, first Foxtail Flats, and then also Four Mile Mesa Solar, solar and storage. Now that, you'll probably hear Four Mile, that's kind of, you know, reminiscent of an older project. There was an Eight Mile project years ago that had an inducement resolution. That is this project. It's been acquired by DESRI, by Fortosolar US. And so that is a project that's now going to be developed in tandem, both the Foxtail Flats and the Four Mile Project's been renamed as Four Mile rather than Eight Mile. So you can see that the location right here on the map, northwest of Farmington and west of Aztec, it is on, well, we'll go to the next, next slide. You can see that this is the Yew Mountain Yew Reservation here, and most of this, these two projects are going to be located on Yew Mountain Yew tribal lands. There, there's a little bit that's not. So let's go to this slide. You can see in the bottom left corner there, there is an existing, there will be a genti line. So you see the yellow dotted genti line is all in tribal land, and then there's a, just under a mile of genti line that will be on non-travel land, BLM land and some private land. So that is the only piece that's not on tribal land that's, that's planned on. And then in the red is, is all the rest of the project area. The light oranges is tribal land. So background, I already mentioned that DESRI built the 200-megawatt San Juan Solar Project. In, in February of '24, DESRI executed a lease with the Yew Mountain Yew Tribe to be able to do operations, you know, operate these projects. There is a PPA in place with Os Alamos for part of the project, one of the projects. The Four Mile Mesa Project is still, does not have a PPA currently, and that, that's going to be part of negotiations going forward. There's been a lot of site work that's been done for this project, topography, engineering assessment, and they have 39%, as I mentioned, 90 to 95% of the projects on tribal land. The status is, there's, there's been many of the studies that have been completed listed there on the slide. We're, certainly we'll work with the county and the Yew Mountain Yew Tribe on all the specifics of the project. Certainly we need to work with the, the tribe, and there's a lease in place, and there is discussion on that. There's also been some discussion with the county on how fire will be handled, and that needs to be resolved with, with the county. The Yew Mountain Yew Tribe doesn't have services to provide, so we would need to have some, some contract with the county, or at least figure out how to make sure that that's done. And we've been in discussions with Mike Stark and the county to handle that, that certainly needs to be nailed down. The land rights have been secured, subject to the VIA approving the lease between the developer and the tribe. The planned schedule for now is to start construction end of this year, and then commencement of COD, commencement of, of the operations would be in the fourth quarter of '26 for Foxtail, and then the following year for the Four Mile Project. So there is, I didn't tell you the number, it's 170 megawatt storage, sorry, 170 megawatt is the solar for Foxtail Flats with 80 megawatts of battery storage. The Four Mile Mesa has 100 megawatts of, of solar and 100 megawatts of storage. So if you're, if you're doing the math, that's 270 megawatts of, of solar and 180 of, of storage. So that's all that I have. Any, happy to answer any questions specific to the project. Also, we have online Jonathan Kett, who is the project manager for this project for DESRI, if you have any project-specific questions as well. DESRI, if you have any project-specific questions as well.
Mr. Chair. I see PV and BESS. What are those?
Yes. PV is prophylactic, it's an engineer term.
Okay.
I'm an attorney, so I don't know. But that, that's solar.
Okay.
PV means solar, and then BESS is Battery Energy Storage System.
Okay.
So storage is referred to as BESS.
Yeah. You know, and I don't see it written out somewhere. It's a little hard for me to.
There's a lot of, a lot of.
A lot of effort.
Yeah.
To understand. I beg your asking.
Mr. Stark, in San Juan County, some of the yoot land goes into the county. Is that correct? Because I noticed that.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Totacini, yes. This entire project is located in San Juan County, but as Mr. Runyon mentioned, 95% is on the Yoot Mountain Yoot Land, which is located in San Juan County. So this isn't extending up into Colorado.
And that's my turf as district going.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Totacini, this is in your district. That is correct.
Yeah.
As well as the previous project.
This is the Barker Dome area?
Mr. Chair, that's correct. This is, this extends up into the Barker Dome area from where the current project exists, San Juan Solar One.
West of the.
Extends to the northeast of the current project.
Well, thank you for the presentation, for sure. Thank you. You bet. I believe this is, go ahead.
County Chair, Commissioners, Peter Kelton again. Just wanted to walk you through the industrial revenue bond process, what they are, how they work, things of that nature. So I'm going to go ahead and start. So industrial revenue bonds are an economic development tool that is used throughout the state of New Mexico, threatened by both by municipalities and by counties. Tens of billions of dollars have been issued in industrial revenue bonds. Issuers that we represent, issuers meaning counties and municipalities, include Harding County, Quay County, Roosevelt County, Grant County, and Luna County, to name a few, in addition to San Juan County. We also represent developers in various counties across the state. And just to be clear from the onset, these bonds that are issued are not a debt of the county. The county is not responsible for providing any financing for these projects. In no event would the county be responsible for repaying any of the debt that's issued as part of the IRV project. Rather, it's structured as, to best describe it, as an intercompany loan, where one arm of the developer is loaning money to another arm of the developer. And the net effect is the creation of a, of certain tax exemptions for the project. So again, the, the main purpose of industrial revenue bonds is to provide gross receipts, compensating, and property tax exemptions for a developer. In exchange for those tax exemptions, the developer would provide certain payments in lieu of taxes. That can be structured in a variety of different ways. And one of the benefits of those payments in lieu of taxes is that, unlike property taxes, which are, you know, limited in terms of what you can use those funds for, these are contractual payments. And the county has a lot more discretion and ability to use those funds than it might have for property taxes, things like, you know, don't have to go to the voters to ask for approvals, things like that. So in terms of the structure of industrial revenue bonds, what ends up happening is the developer will transfer its interest in the equipment and also any real property interest, so leasehold interest or actual ownership of land to the county. And the county would then lease those, those property interests back to the developer, and the developer would develop the site, instruct everything, locate all of the equipment on the project site. And because of the county's ownership of the project, the property taxes would be exempted from, and the developer would also take on the role of agent for the county. And because of that agency relationship, the developer would also receive gross receipts and compensating taxes on the developer's purchase of solar equipment, things of that nature. So in order to paper up this entire transaction, there's three main documents. You've got a lease agreement that I alluded to earlier, and then the bonds would be issued under an indenture, and the bonds would be purchased through a bond purchase agreement. So, you know, again, the IRVs are not an obligation of the county. In no event would be responsible for paying back, paying back bonds or anything of that nature. Instead, the developer would purchase the bonds from, one arm of the developer would purchase the bonds, and those bonds would be used to fund the acquisition of tangible personal property or equipment for the project. That, the best way to conceptualize the size of the bonds is that's the developer's estimate for how much the developer would potentially plan to acquire in equipment for the project. And that serves as the maximum amount that the developer can purchase in equipment while getting those gross receipts and compensating tax exemptions. So another aspect of IRVs, so that there are the annual payments that would be made, also known as a pilot, and that by statute, a portion of what the county receives would have to go to the school districts. That's all worked out statutorily. And that, the payments that must go to the school district by statute are worked out through a rather convoluted process that provides for what percentage of the county's portion of the pilot goes to the school districts, and then how the pilot is allocated among those school districts as well, with the school district in which the project is located getting most of the pilot, and then a larger, a large portion being allocated on the basis of geographic area, and the smallest portion being allocated based on student membership, I think is a way of measuring how many students the, the school district serves. That being said, whatever amounts that the county receives, the county can allocate how it would desire to do so for items like holding schools harmless, things of that nature. So as I mentioned earlier, the spending restrictions that would normally apply to property tax receipts would not apply to these payments, so you would have greater flexibility for what to do with those funds than you might otherwise have. So in terms of what would need to happen in order to get through the IRV process, the first step is the adoption of the inducement resolution. That's the item currently on the agenda today. What the inducement resolution accomplishes is that it establishes the agency relationship between the county and the developer. And from that date forward, the developer would be able to start, be able to start ordering equipment and receiving the gross receipts and compensating tax exemptions, provided that if the IRV does not close, the developer would have to pay back what, any gross receipts or compensating taxes that it avoided by virtue of the inducement resolution. The inducement resolution also serves the purpose of authorizing the county to mail notices to taxing jurisdictions. So taxing jurisdictions being the, the college and the school districts located within the county. And there would be a 30-day waiting period from the mailing of those notices before an ordinance could be considered. And then, of course, the inducement resolution also authorizes the county to publish notice of the consideration of the ordinance at least two weeks in advance of consideration of the ordinance. The next step would be consideration of that same ordinance. The ordinance would authorize the county to issue the bonds, and it would also approve the forms of the IRV documents that I mentioned earlier, your lease, your indenture, and your bond purchase agreement. After the ordinance has been adopted, there'd be a 30-day waiting period, and then we would be able to proceed to execution and delivery and closing of the transaction. But there wouldn't be an obligation necessarily to close right on the 30th day. So there's flexibility for, for providing everyone with the time that they need to make sure that all the property interests can be conveyed effectively, and the documents reflect the expectations of the county and the developer. So the two projects before you today are solar farms and solar energy storage facilities. The development would be undertaken by affiliates or subsidiaries of the Shaw Renewables. And the aggregate amount of the bonds across, you know, the two separate inducement resolutions would be $621 million. The term of the IRVs and the exact pilot structure is still being negotiated, but there's a maximum term of the IRV by state statute of 30 years. So I know I just gave a lot of information. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, it's been my experience that when we're dealing with bonds, it's complicated from, from the get-go, right? But it's my understanding that, you know, this, this is in relation to the relationship with DE Shaw and the county. But it also gives the county flexibility on how to spend these bonds once they're granted, and we're not left on the hook as far as having to pay for them. Is that, is that what we were understanding?
County Chair, Commissioners, there would be no obligation for the county to pay any, so there wouldn't even be flexibility, because it would strictly be a matter that DESRI's affiliates would handle internally. And the exact specifics of repayment of the bonds would be worked out as sort of a matter between the, or within DESRI itself. So the, under no circumstances would the county be obligated to pay any amount of the bonds.
Yep. And then the Commissioners have any questions?
Pilot, pil, is that payment in lieu of taxes?
Uh, County Chair.
Because I understand pil, P-I-L-T, but I wasn't too sure of that.
County Chair, Commissioners, yes. Sometimes it's referred to as a pil, sometimes as a, as a pilot. Depends on.
Okay.
Very good.
Yes.
Those acronyms.
Yeah.
And Mr. Chair, if I, if I could, I might add that, you know, we've entered into these IRV arrangements before. In fact, with DESRI, the San Juan Solar One Project, we issued industrial revenue bonds associated with that project, and, and even other projects like Prax Air, located out in the Cartland area. I recall the exact date on that one. It's been a few years now, but, so these are, this is a common arrangement for us to enter into with these companies to help facilitate projects. So I just want to make sure you're aware that this is not new ground for us to, to plow associated with these financial arrangements.
Well, that certainly helps us out. All right. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the, this resolution, the Consideration of Resolution Number 2425-74.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 24-25-74, the Foxtail Flats Solar LLC Industrial Revenue Bonds.
All right. We've got a motion. There's a second. Is any opposition?
Gary.
Gary, how do you vote?
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Thank you, sir.
And then the next one.
And we've got one more. Consideration of Resolution Number 2425-75, Four Mile Mesa Solar LLC Industrial Revenue Bonds. Go ahead, Peter.
So everything that I just said earlier remains true. The resolution that you just approved was for an IRV in the size of 362 million. This one is the remainder of the 621 million that I mentioned earlier, so for 259 million. And I wanted to make clear as well, adoption of the inducement resolution does not obligate the county to push forward with the project, but instead it just gives the county the ability to continue the discussions, negotiations, and take the steps necessary to move on to the next steps. So with that, everything that I said earlier applies here.
You don't want to repeat yourself.
Unless you're interested, I'm happy to do that. Yes, that's all.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 24-25-75, the Four Mile Mesa Solar LLC IRVs.
Right. There's a motion on the floor. Send a second. Gary, are you in favor of the resolution?
Yes, sir. Aye.
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 Motion carried.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number six. Consideration of Application of Renewal of Variants from San Juan County Cannabis Regulation Ordinance Number 120 for Sugar Skunk Farms LLC, 705B and 705C, New Mexico Highway 575, Aztec, New Mexico. Michelle, how are you?
I am good. How are you, sir?
You're on.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Sugar Skunk Farms LLC was approved for a three-year variance on March 1st of 2022. For an indoor cannabis production business, no formal complaints were filed on the business during that three-year period, although verbal mention was mentioned during another transaction in community development. A renewal for variance application was submitted to the Community Development Department on March 10th of 2025, seeking a variance from Section 3A of Ordinance Number 120, which is the minimum distance separation from a residence requirement for the life of the business this time. Sugar Skunk Farm LLC wishes to continue as a micro cannabis producer operating in two growhouses and an open grow area between the growhouses. The proposed grow operation is within 300 feet of one residence, with the closest interaction being 188 feet from the closest grow structure. The original variance structure is no longer in use with cannabis-related activities other than office space. Sugar Skunk Farms LLC has relocated activities to the south of the original building and increased the distance from area residences, including the remaining residents within the 300-foot variance area. Public hearing was held before Hearing Officer Doug Echols on April 2nd, 2025. The request of variance was not opposed by anyone prior or during the hearing. One local cannabis retail owner who buys from Sugar Skunk Farm LLC spoke in favor of the variance. An employee of Sugar Skunk Farm LLC who lives on the property also spoke to the hardship that would be caused to his family if the variance was not granted. Hearing Officer Echols submitted written findings and conclusions. The variance be granted is requested for both the indoor and outdoor cultivation at 705A and 705B Highway 575, so long as no cannabis plant is closer than 188 feet to the residence located at 703 Highway 575. Based upon the proven history of operations, compliance with previous variances, and with New Mexico state law and regulation, that is, variance should be for the life of the business, subject to revocation from violation of the terms hereof and regulations of the New Mexico Cannabis Control Division. And with that, I believe Joe has a statement to read.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the benefit of the public, I normally like to read the statement about, about how the commission goes about approving the variance. And, and I just wanted to tell the public that, that when the commission considers work to approve a variance... a variance, we have advised them to avoid asking questions that will elicit new information from the applicant. The reason for this is that the hearing on this issue has already been conducted by a hearing officer. If the commission were to ask questions that bring up new information, that would in effect be reconducting parts of the hearing tonight at this meeting, and that could potentially violate the due process rights of parties who did not have noticed that a new hearing would be conducted. Instead, the commission will be relying on the evidence gathered by the Hearing Officer Doug Echols at the cannabis variance hearing to make their decision. They've also been able to consider comments that they've individually received from constituents. So with that.
We don't need to discuss it any further than that, for sure. Okay. I'd like to entertain the motion on consideration of application for renewal of variance.
Before we do that, there was something about the odor. Has that been -- it wasn't addressed or something like that? Or is it?
So originally, what happened was they came in to get a mobile home placement permit, a neighbor did, and just mentioned that it was smelly. They didn't want to file a complaint. They didn't want to -- they just mentioned. So it was just a verbal mention.
Thank you for clarifying that.
So nothing substantiated with it.
We had talked about that before.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the renewal of the variance for ordinance number 120 for Sugar Skunk Farm LLC.
I'll second.
And Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt, but would that be for the life of the business?
Yes. I think that's what.
Yes, I think you're right, but I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. Rather than having a restriction.
Just to be clear with the motion, this will be for the life of the business. Okay. And there is a second on the floor.
Second, yes.
Gary, how do you vote?
Aye. Since there was no -- since there was no opposition and no substantial opposition presented, I'll vote to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to item number seven. Update on San Juan County Fair. Mr. Echols, San Juan County Fair Board President. Welcome, Bob.
Mr. Chair, Madam Commissioners, Bob Echols, San Juan County Fair Board. Want to share some exciting news with you. Now, I wanted to give you an update on our fair activity. At the same time, Billy Huishu has been on the fair board for a number of years. He's here, and he may want to say something. But first off, I'd like to appreciate the support that we get from San Juan County for our San Juan County Fair. And also would be neglect and not recognizing the McGee Park staff that we work with, who help provide everything for our fair, Steve Dancy and Michelle Murray. They make everything very -- work very smooth. We're in the middle of getting ready for this coming year's fair. We will be tagging steers and heifers this weekend for our fair for entries. We will be doing the same thing in May for pigs, lambs, and goats as we move forward. We're also having contracts being issued for food concessions and commercial booths. We always worry a little about the success of our fair, but based on the support of our county constituents, we seem to always do better than we expect. Our sale last year was $750,000. And that's just, that's a phenomenal amount of money that comes from our constituents in this county to support our fair. So I just wanted to come for you. Glad to answer any questions. I don't know if Billy has anything he'd like to say, but once again, we appreciate your support.
Well, thank you for that report, Bob. Billy?
Once again, I would just like to echo the big thank you to you Commissioners. Yes, I've been on this fair board since 1987 when Bob and I joined together. What a fun time. It's been a great time, and the working relationship with our Commissioners over the years, second to none. And to echo what Bob has said about the McGee Park staff, wow, what a crew. What a crew. It's been great working with Steve and Michelle. You guys have made some great choices in who you've appointed out there. And, you know, you've taken care of us over the years. I'm the happiest person there is when you built me a new poultry and rabbit barn last year. Thank you, thank you. We even got to use it last Tuesday night for our fair board meeting. Unfortunately, I was not there. But everything that you guys have done, there's not another fairgrounds in this entire state and along, you know, across the country that a county fair has the facilities that we do. But thank you guys for everything that you do for us, have done, and hopefully will continue that we can work with you guys just as though you worked with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Moving forward, well, I just do want to say McGee Park, the fair property that we have, it is just, it really is a jewel for our community. It really is. And we're working on making it better, too.
Just to add to that, I had a chance to attend and see a lot of different county fairs and state fairs and throughout the country, and we're very fortunate to have all we have.
Mr. Chair, I do have one question. You mentioned the sale.
Yes, ma'am.
Was $707,000. Is that growing? Is it staying about the same as it has over the last few years? I mean, I know it's probably not what it was.
It has grown some. I mean, we saw a sale years ago that if we got a sale for $200,000, we were very happy. But our sale has stayed about the same the last couple of years.
Hopefully, it'll get better.
Thank you.
And one part about our sale, the fair, we take no percent away from the kids. So our livestock sale, you know, years past, we had to take a percent from the kids to make the sale work. And then Citizens Bank, of course, stepped up and, you know, had been our partner for a while, but we still, at this day in time, we take no percentage from the kids. So everything that goes through that cell goes to the kids. Nothing is retained for the fair.
That's what it's all about. It's all for the kids.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Stark, I know you've got a letter there that's requesting for, will that come up in the future?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Totacini, yes. In fact, speaking with Mr. Echols, one of the provisions within our current contract with the San Juan County Fair Board is to provide $7,000 towards insurance. And so I think that's the way by which we would look to help satisfy the request that was contained within your packet. And I would defer to Mr. Echols if he had any additional comments regarding that.
Thank you, Mike. Any support that we can get, we certainly appreciate. And so this helps us in our operation, and we, once again, we appreciate the support from the county. Thank you.
Well, moving on. We have a report from the county manager.
Mr. Chair, just a brief update. We've got a few department heads I know are going to speak, and so won't take up too much time. But, you know, the legislative session has finally come to a conclusion with the time clock running out relative to the governor having to make a decision on bills. I'm happy to report that the capital projects that we had received stayed intact and did not suffer a line item vetoed. So full, the full request for the crisis triage center of $7 million, the full request for the clerk's office, expansion and remodel and security upgrades of $2.5 million, and then $200,000 for starting the design and acquisition of land for the EMS Station 6 located in Farmington. Unfortunately, I'm going to report to you, though, despite the valiant efforts of our legislators, actually getting language included within House Bill 2 to prioritize the Pinion Hills project, as you know, our portion of that project is not funded. And there was priority language, and actually two citations within House Bill 2. Both of those citations were line item vetoed by the governor. So as a result of that, I've already reached out to NMDOT Secretary Ricky Stern, or so you reached out to our DOT Commissioner Tom Taylor, to start the process now of trying to find solutions, working with our legislators, hoping that we can find the funding between now and next legislative session and put a plan in place. Because the last thing I think anybody in our community wants is a bridge that only connects to South Side River Road and doesn't make its way all the way up to the hill and complete the transportation vision of that project and connecting to County Road 390. So I just wanted to update you on the good news and unfortunately, the bad news from this session. I can stand for any questions you might have.
Well, thank you for the report. We did get your email, and yeah, it is sad that we didn't get the whole bag, but, you know, we did get up to County Road 3000, and we did get the rest of the money that we, for the triage center and for the expansion of the offices here. So I think we did pretty good. We did pretty good. Any other comments? No? Okay, then we stamp for reports from our elected officials, department heads. Who's up?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Mr. Chairman, I just want to start out by saying I appreciated your question earlier regarding the batteries. It's obviously sensitive to us and something that we tried to plan for, so I appreciated you asking that question and seeking clarification. We were briefed earlier, and certainly those are all things that we prepared for, but I just wanted to mention that. The commission may recall roughly a month ago, I came in front of you just to talk about the potential for fire season and some of the outlook forecasts that we've been looking at. Since that time, you know, those forecasts have really come into fruition. Of course, we haven't had much moisture. We have been very steady responding to escaped fires. Of course, this time of year, the farm and ag community is very busy burning ditches, burning slash piles, things of that nature. And as a result of that, when those fires aren't fully suppressed, they often escape control. And the past few months, we've been extremely busy responding to out-of-control burns, to the point that we finally hit some of our trigger points that I feel is prudent to implement open burning restrictions. Last week, we did implement some progressive restrictions where we were allowing the public to burn until noon, then we asked the public not to burn past that. Unfortunately, we have some members in our community that don't pay attention to those warnings, and over the weekend, that resulted in some escaped fires that actually burned some houses down. So in conferring with county manager, looking at the outlooks, again, you know, we use a scientific method to make these determinations. This time, I do feel in the best interest of public safety that it's prudent to implement a prohibition on open burning. This would not include recreational fires. This would not include welding operations. This would not include flaring operations. This would simply be us not allowing any open burning permits. This would be in place until such time that moisture reduces fire danger. That being said, looking at the 30-day, 60-day outlooks, weather outlooks, fortunately, there's not a whole lot of moisture that's predicted, at least through the end of June. The one bright spot right now is they're saying the monsoons are going to be on time and potentially robust this year, but we've still got a couple tough months ahead of us. And again, in the interest of public safety, I do feel that it's prudent to implement burning restrictions. Over the next several weeks, we'll continue to monitor those conditions, and I may come back and tell you we need to have stricter enforcement. But with that, I stand for any questions that the commission has of me.
Mr. Chair, Chief, on the Navajo Nation side, do you do any radio announcements on this controlled burn? I know a lot of people who are farmers out there do listen to the radio. And like, I became aware that you can only burn seven to noon because there's hardly any wind. But I think a lot of people out there don't really understand that. Will you be doing some radio announcements?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Totacini, excellent question. In fact, Mr. Neely has me scheduled for two radio shows this week, one at the college, and I apologize, Devon, KWYK. So I'll be on the radio, two different occasions this week. In addition, Commissioner Totacini, we do work very closely with Bureau of Indian Affairs and Navajo Nation with our messaging. We do have conversations with those officials when we start implementing fire restrictions. I will tell the commission that Ria Riba has also implemented open burning restrictions. I suspect that the Navajo Nation will follow suit closely due to the fire danger and the fact that they've been picking up a lot of initial activity. And again, within the next several weeks, I suspect everyone around us will be implementing some type of fire restriction.
Well, I hope, like KNDN is what they, most of the farmers listen to, and that's, that would be really beneficial.
Yeah. Commissioner Totacini, if I can step in here, Commissioner, it's all this Commissioner Totacini. We send the same press release to KTNN and KNDN as well as Fiero Radio, which is Spanish language, as we send to all the rest of the radio stations. We rely on our partners. I can't go down there and tell them in Navajo myself, we rely on our partners, and we send all those releases and we send all that information to them. And I don't always get the response that I hope for when we do, but they are a part of that outreach strategy that we have. And when Chief is at KWYK, we're very fortunate that the folks at KNDN and Fiero also invite us into their studios in the morning to discuss that. And unfortunately, that's, you know, five minutes in time on a Thursday morning, and that's unfortunately, most of the exposure that we get through those radio stations unless they take it upon themselves to further that message for us.
Thank you for those press releases, because if I hear it, I'll let you know.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Devon.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. So yesterday, I became aware of an app, WatchDuty. Are you guys, do you have somebody in your department that diligently stays up with that? Seems like a very useful tool. So is it?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Lerner, excellent question, and I would certainly encourage all the members of the commission to download that app. It's a free app. And Commissioner Lerner, the way that works is when we have a fire on state or BLM land, that fire report gets submitted to the federal interagency dispatch center. So kind of a long process. Once the federal dispatch center has that size up, they send it to the National Interagency Coordination Center, NIC, going back to some acronyms. NIC actually updates all the fires, and that's where they download those fires on WatchDuty. So it's not us specifically putting those fires in, it's us sending the information to the dispatch centers. The dispatch center is sending it to NIC, and then NIC uploads those on the WatchDuty app. Again, it's a free app. I think you can choose two or three counties that you want to monitor for fires. Gives you a lot of detailed information, evacuation, fire size, jurisdiction, things of that nature, and you'll probably start to see or have seen fires here in San Juan County pop up on that application.
Good to see there's nothing today.
Nothing, nothing, nothing today. Nothing.
Yeah. Good deal.
We do have a red flag warning posted for Thursday, extreme winds and low relative humidity, so we'll keep our fingers crossed so we don't have anything develop on Thursday. But unfortunately, Mother Nature's just not giving us a whole lot to work with right now. now.
Hope, pray for wind, for rain, for sure.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Any other department heads? Mr. Sabatra?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Along with the praise, and I will echo the praise for Director Dansey and Deputy Director Murray, we have a great facility at McGee Park, and they do an outstanding job. And to add to that, there is a, a plan in place, a master plan, as you all are aware, and many of the stakeholders that attended two weeks ago, the McGee Master Plan. And there is a public meeting coming up on April 24th. So my hope is that you could encourage anyone that you know to participate, give feedback. If you walk out that door, you will see some poster boards identifying the conceptual designs that have been put forward, from the infield to dog park, just a whole different ideas that have been captured, and there'll be another stakeholder meeting, and ultimately that final master plan will come to the commission for review.
In the same room that we had that meeting in?
Mr. Chair, that is correct. It will be at the same room at the same time, April 24th, 5:30, Room C.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Is there any other department heads? Need to report? None? I'll read the comments.
Yeah.
Comments and inputs from the general public. Comments are accepted in person, limited to three minutes, and to subjects the commission has not previously discussed, or formal action has not been taken. No formal action, formal action will be taken at this time that relates to the comments or inputs from the general public. Anybody from the general public need to say something? I'm hearing none.
I didn't get paid for that.
Oh, he's, okay, he's coming, I thought he was going to come around this way. Representative Jake Joseph, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the, of the commission, and also members of the public, just, uh, community members. I just want to again, uh, set, send out my, my gratitude for, you know, this, I know, I know that this is a busy time, as many of our, uh, uh, community members are, are working on their farms, and, um, and I, I just want to also report back that, um, I'll, I'll be doing something more, more detailed, but I just want to mention that, you know, as, as my position as a new legislator i- in, in this session, that this, I, I have been put on two committees, and that's the roads, the, the Transportation Committee, and als- as well as the House Appropriations and Finance Committee. So that, those are my two committee assignments during this session of, uh, which we will reconvene in, in the next legislative session, which is a, a budget-related 30-day session. So I'm looking forward to continuing on the, the collaboration work that I've had had with our county delegation. I'm so glad to, to, and not be there by, by myself, but, you know, I've, uh, worked many times. In fact, one of my bills I sponsored was, uh, was bipartisan, was, was, my cosponsor was Representative Duncan, and that was a House Bill 333, which was a contamination waste sites. And we were able to, as an appropriation bill, secure $20 million. In fact, it was $50 million what was requested from the House side through appropriations, but when Senate Finance went through it, they reduced it to $20 million. This will clean up, this will put money to help clean up contaminated waste sites, which includes brownfield reclamation, um, uh, dry cleaners. But what, what, what was really important to us was uranium, abandoned uranium mine sites. So it costs $4 million to clean up a, a dry uranium site, and $12 million for a wet uranium site. And the target area is the Grants Mining District, but, you know, working with the Mexican Environment Department, they do want to collaborate with the Navajo Nation, and, and so like, there's many opportunities for that, but this is the first time we're using general fund money to start this process for contaminated waste sites. There's a, you know, I learned a lot in, in this first session, and I'm really wanting to use that to, to help, you know, just the, the work that we did. I think we pulled our, our capital ally money together. The first one was a county triage, a, a project, you know, that was, you know, one thing that, that we, we came together with. The other one was Navajo Prep Preparatory School, so I'm really glad about that. And then one thing I asked for, which, which they, they all stepped up and supported me, was a shiprock command center. So we were able to bring back, oh, just over 1.2 million for that project. So with that, I'll, I'll conclude, and, and again, I'll have a much more detailed report. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Thank you, thank you. Is there any others? Not?
Tax Day. Today's tax day.
Oh, tax day.
You just had to go and spoil the day, didn't you?
Thank you, Madam.